We're initiatives raised at prior meetings.
None at this time.
Special events, we had none today?
We had no special events.
And now we're on to items to present it by the city auditor, 2017 audit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, I'd like to express our appreciation for the opportunity to continue to represent the city of Esberry Park as your independent auditor. It's a privilege to do so and I thank you. The report, audit report for the year's end of 12/31/17 and 16 has been completed and it's been submitted to Division of Government Services. That report's a culmination of an unbelievable amount of work, both on our part as the auditor and moreover on your part as the auditer. We'll go over draft report and comments and recommendations shortly. There's an independent auditor's report in that report dated June 30th, 2018, which expresses an unmodified opinion on the regulatory basis financial statements. And really, when an auditor issues an unmodified opinion, that's really his highest form of assurance that the financial statements are prepared in accordance with the regulatory basis of accounting that's prescribed by the state of New Jersey. So, report number one, unmodified. We also issued a report on internal control over financial reporting and on compliance and other matters. Last year, that report was modified. This year, I'm happy to report there are no modifications to the internal control compliance opinion, so a big improvement there. The report overall indicates the city's financial health is very good and continues to improve. 2017 set records once again with the city having over 10.4 million in current fund surplus, 552 in sewer surplus, 2.4 million in beach surplus, and 4.8 million in parking fund balance. All of those are record highs for the city. If you remember, last year I said all your fund balances were at record highs, so they continue to improve. But the interesting thing about those facts is that there's still room for improvement, and I expect improvement to occur in 2018. Achieving results like that doesn't just happen, it takes a team effort, it takes the governing body to have a vision, it takes the administration to carry out that vision, it takes a team at the top like you've said. Everyone should be extremely proud of the progress that this city has made. Some other quick facts that are contained in the audit. $27.4 million in bond and another debt. Net debt of $24.9 million, which equates to a debt percentage of 1.706 percent, well below the 3.5 percent maximum that's set by the Division of Government Services. So your debt load is right in line and not above or max. You had $37.3 million in cash as of this snapshot in time. This audit is a snapshot at 12/31/17. So at that, on that day, $37.3 million in cash up about $11 million from the prior years amount. I'm sure you know that this is no small operation. The current fund budget is up to $45 million, and there were no over expenditures in any of the funds. The sewer budget of 5.3, the beach of 1.8, and the parking of 2.5. All of those had no, no over expenditures. As I mentioned, last year, Gatsby 68/71 required the auditors to report the city's share of the state's net pension liability, both for the public employee retirement system and the police and fire retirement system. Because the state decided to fund their obligations to the tune of 40 percent this year instead of 30 percent last year, and because the actuaries changed the discount rate slightly, the city's net pension liability was $16 million for PERS, down $3 million from the prior year, and $60.6 million for PFRS, down $11 million from the prior year. Right now, those are just footnote disclosures. Who knows what's going to happen in the future, but we're required to disclose those amounts, and we did. Next year, there'll be similar disclosures for Gatsby 75, which will require us to disclose the other post-employment benefit share of the state's liability. So we'll get on that. The city has stayed in federal funding, and therefore we're required to perform a single audit on top of everything else that we did. We noted in that single audit that there were seven findings on major programs, both CDBG and to a lesser extent your SABR program, staff for adequate fire emergency response. Many of the CDBG findings we had were repetitive, and we're aware of the city's change in their CDBG program, and hope that'll ameliorate their recommendations going forward. There were also seven other non-grant related recommendations that were made, which corrective action will be required for stemming from quotes to pilots to sewer rinse, confirming orders, and nothing really material there. So with that, I'd like to open it up for any questions you might have, and if you have any answer.
I don't. I would have run with Michael.
Exhibit A1, sheet 1 of 2.
Yes.
Just so everybody knows, explain what Miss Alaina's revenue anticipated consists of, please.
It's, it's pretty much all of, all the revenues that you enjoy. For instance, some of the things that are in there are core revenues, interest and cost on taxes, transitional aid, construction code fees, pilots, hotel occupancy tax, interest on investments, carpes fees and permits, ABC licenses, et cetera.
Thank you. And I didn't see the same here, so maybe I missed it. With the fighting in Washington, the fighting in Trenton, and the salt deductions, do you have a lot of people have their parks prepaid with taxes? And if so, how does that affect us?
Yes, you did. There was a rush, there was a mad rush right around the end of the year, mostly on the last day of the year, for people to take advantage of the, of the change in the legislation so that they could prepay their taxes and get a deduction in 2017. Yes, your prepaid taxes rose from 282,000 in the 16 audit, which was about average, to $1,173,000. So part of that $11 million increase I had mentioned earlier that you had in cash, 900,000, that's attributable to the prepaid taxes that people paid right before the end of the year. I thought it would be a lot more, to tell you the truth. Some of our affluent towns had a 20-
Ocean Township is like through the roof, I thought.
We had a 20 percent, 20 times 200 percent increase in, in one of our towns. So I thought it would be higher, but 1.173 million's nothing to see as that. In fact, some people actually prepaid their pilot fees this year as well, and we recorded those as prepaid pilot fees, so that wasn't on the taxes.
So all the questions I have, thank you.
Brian.
Brian. Anyone else?
It looks like the beach utility is maintaining its budget. Am I reading that correctly?
Yeah, the beach, the beach utility had a, had a good year. Beach revenue was up for, for bad sales, about $100,000. And I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna continue yet. Beach is self-escalating, and doing good.
And regarding our fund balance, I love the term fund balance. Are we maintaining a constant level of appropriation reserves that will regenerate the same fund balance next year?
That's a good question. Good question. You have to take a look at, when you look at appropriation reserves, so that's the unspent balance of the prior budget. So when you say appropriation reserves, that's what you had left over from the 17 budget. You have to take a look at that and the encumbrances that were placed against that budget, and if you do that, in 16, you had a combination of 3.5 million dollars in those two items. And of that 3.5 million, 2.7 of it, 2.7 million dollars lapsed to fund balance. So of the 3.5, you didn't spend 2.7, which is about 77 percent. In 17, the combination of the appropriation reserves and the encumbrances is 4.9 million dollars, so you're up about $1.4 million. If you lapse 75 percent of that, you'll be at 3.7 million dollars lapse, that elapsed in 18, which is more than the 2.7 that elapsed in 17, so you're going to be in good shape on that again. So the whole actual answer to that is yes. Thank you. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Move on to matters from the city council.
So I'd just like to express condolences for the, to the Famularo family and all others that were impacted by the recent fire, and, and a note of thanks to our fire department for doing such an incredibly great job in getting this fire under control so quickly.
I don't have anything that I would like to echo what Eileen has said, and I need to convey this to the crowd.
I truly believe everyone up here feels the same way, and my understanding at 7 o'clock tomorrow, in front of this, in front of this house there on-
Hamry Courts.
Okay, the Hamry Courts then. They're gonna have a visual?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right. Sad situation. I was gonna ask the council tonight, is it possible that we can just take two chairs, one for Jerry, one for James, and just put a black cloth over it and set it aside for maybe a couple of weeks or so? Rita, welcome back. I hope you're feeling better, I hope everything is better in your life. This coming Saturday, it's, recreation's putting on the first annual fashion show, starts at 1 o'clock at the BFW. If you haven't received a ticket or bought a ticket, it's still available, but if not, just come as you are. That's all I have, thank you.
I also want to echo our condolences not only to the Famularo family, but there's at least three or four other families who were also greatly affected by the fire, Jim Condo, Carolyn, and a number of other families, Randy. And in addition to the fashion show, which I am so excited about, Jesse, there's also, I'm gonna say, 8 to 10, don't quote me, on Esberry Park Family Day at the Beach. So that's on the Athav Beach, it's free surfing lessons. We have a bunch of surfer volunteers who teach kids mainly in Esberry Park how to surf. And there's free transportation from the Mercy Center, the Westside Community Center, and the Boys and Girls Club in Esberry Park on Monroe. So if you can, everyone should come out on Saturday at 12 and check that out, or go to the fashion show and maybe stop by after. But it's really, as somebody who's been involved in it every year, it is a really, really awesome experience to see so many kids, little kids surfing and being taught how to surf in Esberry Park. And it's free.
And that's from 12 to 5. And again, I echo my condolences to Famularo family and everybody else involved, and we, tonight when we have our moment of silence, I wish everybody just had them in their hearts. Thank you.
I accidentally skipped the review of the agenda item, so we'll move back up there. I got a little excited, sorry.
It's a short agenda tonight. Individual resolutions, 259, change the bills, 260 is accepting the 2017 municipal audit, 261 is authorizing a change order, number two for the Firehouse Land project, number one with some time extensions, this one is deduction costs. 262 is awarding the contract for Bridge and Hex Streets. Hex Street is partly funded through state aid, the anticipated start date for the work is mid-August, starting on Bridge Street. Resolution 263 is closeout of the Monmouth County Open Space Grants for Springwood Avenue Park. These closeouts require us to be done in order to be paid. These grants are $250,000 apiece, and the city would receive the $750,000 that have been output through our capital program. 264 is the five-year tax exemption for commercial property, for a property known as 1101, 1105-1109 Memorial Drive. Resolution 265, events of 15 and 17, 20, I'm sorry, fiscal year 15, fiscal year 17, annual action plans for the CDBG program. This is reallocating monies, working with county to purchase additional security cameras throughout the city. As you heard Mr. Kaplan just say, one of the repeat findings was the CDBG program. Everyone knows that the city moved the CDBG program to the county, and we're in the process of doing a lot of cleanup of inactive projects. Resolution 20-
Where's the camera still, Michael?
I'm not gonna say that publicly. Bob, right. Resolution 2018, deck 266 is receiving grants, additional grant funds from the county senior program. We're gonna be purchasing some additional computers, a karaoke machine, and a lectern. They approached Mr. Schultz, Director of Social Services, last week, that they had additional money laundered by the city. Resolutions 267 and 268 are liquor license renewals. Is there any questions on the resolutions? Moving forward, there's two ordinances for introduction tonight. Signs and approving adopting an amendment to the Main Street redevelopment plan. The sign ordinance introduction is important as it's part of the municipal public access plan that DEP requires. You remember approximately a year ago, the city hired P&amp;M to put together the plan. This is part of the requirements, is that all our public spaces have to say that it is open public spaces, and this is a mandatory ordinance allowing us to put up our own signs. The second, I think the public hearing for ordinance 2018-21 is to be tabled. So that's the agenda.
Questions? Next.
Matters by the city manager? Matters by the city attorney? All right, at this time, we'll adjourn until 7:00 PM. I'm gonna open up the regular session of the City of Esberry Park Council meeting. We'll do the roll call. Councilmember Chapman?
Here.
Councilmember Clayton?
Here.
Councilmember Kendall?
Present.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Here.
Mayor Moore?
Here.
Please rise for a silent parent moment of reflection, please. Flag salute. Applauding.
To the flag. Of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Esberry Park Crest, the Coast, and the Star Ledger on January 4, 2018, and posted on a bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. We're gonna go right to the proclamation recognizing the Esberry Park Environmental Shade Tree Commission.
Yay. Okay.
So I'm gonna read the proclamation, but if everybody wants to come up, that would be awesome to stand up there.
You did, yeah.
The commission, oh, the proclamation's the commission and the Friends of Esberry, and this is for the volunteers, but if you need me to put the volunteer in there, I will, but of course, it's all for the volunteers.
And the Friends.
Doc, Roy.
Alex.
Melanie.
Is that even working? Is that working? So the city of Esberry Park has been asking Tom Pavinsky if he would do, accept a proclamation from the city. Every year that we've asked him that, he's essentially told us to go F ourselves because it's about the volunteers and the rest of the commission. And so at our last meeting, he said that he would let us give a proclamation. He- Okay. So at, at our last council meeting, Tom was here, and we asked if we could give the commission and the volunteers and the new Friends of the Esberry Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission a proclamation. So this is a result of that, and this is a result of not only the commission members, but all of the volunteers you see here and the ones that aren't here. So I'm gonna go ahead and read this. "The Esberry Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission maintains the trees throughout the roadways in the city of Esberry Park. Routine trimming, hazardous tree removals, insect and disease control, tree replacement, planting projects, memorial parks, as well as maintaining plant material for our neighborhoods, parks, and green areas. The commission, the volunteers, design and construct planting projects, community gardens. Their goal is to maintain a healthy tree environment and green spaces to maintain and enhance the health and beauty of our community. Trees and green areas help preserve soil from erosion, give shade from the heat, improve air quality, add to the aesthetic view of our neighborhoods and community parks. The commission has held a close relationship with the city's Department of Public Works for many years. And on June 12th, the Friends of the Esberry Park Environment and Shade Tree Commission, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) was created to continue the Environment and Shade Tree Commission's commitment to further the beauty and health of the city. Mayor John Moore and the Esberry Park City Council acknowledge and commend the Environment and Shade Tree Commission of Esberry Park for the many years of partnership and dedicated service to the city of Esberry Park and its residents." And I would be remiss if I didn't point out Jim is the reason that we have the Friends of Esberry Park Environment and Shade Tree 501(c)(3). So now I'm gonna give it over to Tom.
Well, first of all, it's a pleasure, and it is an honor, but it's more wonderful. Look, look around here. Every Wednesday, every Saturday, you can find just about all of these people, and I'm yelling at them, or chastising them, or telling them what they're doing wrong, or how, for example, Kathy always steps on plants, always steps on them. Although lately, although lately she hasn't, no, she hasn't. But it's, it's a great experience. And we have 11 gardens going on now in the city, and each one is getting better and better. And we're getting so many good words from people who pass by or who drive by and are just very thankful for what's happening in the city. But again, I have to go back to what I said last week, or last two weeks ago at the meeting. If it really weren't for the city council, if it weren't for the city manager, and for the DPW, so much of what we get done wouldn't even begin to get done, because a lot of that stuff is heavy duty, and we don't have the capacity to do that. We can do planting, and we can do designing, and we can do weeding, but we can't pull out huge shrubs and all that kind of stuff. And I'm gonna make a bid right now, this coming Saturday, there's a, this coming Saturday, what, our greening on Saturday is gonna be a bit of a heavy duty one, because a neighbor in Esberry Park who just bought a new home is getting rid of a whole bunch of things in front of her house, most of which are pavers and stones. And we can use those pavers, so we're gonna be putting pallets out in front on Wednesday and stacking them up, and asking the DPW to come with a forklift and bring them over to store at the park, at the yard. And so we have plans for new gardens, we have new, we have plans for new, hopefully more vegetable gardens. We got a late start this year. Thanks to Porch Fest, we got $5,000 to buy new wood. We bought white oak, and it took a long time to get it milled, it's freshly milled, and it took an even longer time for us to get them built. And then we got 50 yards of screened organic soil that we had to schlep in wheelbarrows. But, but again, the DPW was there helping us. So all of our beds are full, we have just planted, not the best time to plant, but they're all managing. And so we're working to keep them alive and fruitful. And every Wednesday and every Saturday morning, we give whatever is in harvest, we give away free to anyone who comes to the, to the farm stand. And one last kudo has to always go to Watermark. One of our members, Russell Lewis, who's not here, is a commission member. Russell, several years ago, said, "You know, I, I love that garden, and you don't, I don't think we should keep renting the beds out to people, because it was, it was expensive in the beginning, and we needed to do that." He said, "But if you're willing to grow everything free and give it away to everybody, I'll underwrite that," from Watermark. So we have a, we have a great support from Watermark, and so between Watermark and the city, and the city council, and the city manager, and the DPW, and all these incredible people, you can't go wrong. Thanks a lot, an awful lot for this honor.
If only.
All right, we're gonna continue on with the meeting. Next up is public participation. Can I have a motion to open the meeting up to the public, please?
Move it.
Each member who would like to speak, please come up to the mic. Each member has three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address to the mic, please.
My name is Melanie Holsberg, 510 De Lake Drive, and I have a question regarding the work that's being done on De Lake Drive. I know they're doing a lot of work with the curbs and the sidewalks, et cetera, but I was wondering if there were any plans to put any pedestrian crosswalks in. It's very dangerous if you're parking on the other side of De Lake Drive by the lake to cross the street. People come speeding, and a lot of people have been injured. And I was just wondering, as long as there's this opportunity, that they're doing work if crosswalks are in the planning?
I'm not 100% positive. That is, that's a state project going on, and we don't have the plans in front of us. I don't want to tell you yes or no without, let us check and we'll get back to you.
Okay, and if it's not, could you find-
If not, we'll see if the state can add them. If not, we'll, crosswalks are fairly inexpensive, we'll see if the state will add them.
Because, I mean, it's not just our building, it's a bunch of-
They, I agree with it. They designed the project, they designed the road, they're the ones ripping up everybody's sidewalks recklessly, they're the ones putting their stuff over the streets recklessly, and we've sent them nasty letters, and if they do anything to anybody's property, please get in touch with DOT directly. You can go through us, but I'm not happy with the work they've been doing. I think it's been of low quality, and the mountains of dirt they leave around the telephone poles is ridiculous, saying they're gonna settle. No pole's gonna settle that much, and meanwhile, when arranged, it's just going into the storm rain. So we, we're not happy with the work being done. We'll be happy with the end results, but we'll see if that's not in the plans, if it can be added.
Yeah, I would appreciate if it could be mentioned, because it's a significant problem, especially if there are older people who can't run across the street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it to our attention. My problem is, and I would like to know, how do you have, in that split second, how do you manage to have a protest? I mean, and I've come to council meetings long enough to know, that you can't even have an event, it would take you almost 14 days for it to be approved by your council. It would have to come before you, you would have to know all the ins and outs, and this and that, and if there's insurance and what have, because the first thing that came to my mind is, what is this stage doing here, this music doing here, are we getting insurance for it, who's paying for it, and did we get paid? And that's what I'd like to know.
Oh, is it the short-term rental?
I don't know what's going on, but like, all of a sudden, it springs up out of like, the springs of whatever. So, do we have any answers? And I think, my calculation is if it's $1,500 a night, or whatever, it comes up to $7,500 over to the city.
Is that it?
That's it.
Okay. I just reported to code and the police department of just to look into the corner area that you're looking at, to make sure that everything is, you know, up to par. Concerning the protests and counter-protests, or however you wanna phrase them, the Festival of Life, the Festival of Life application came before the city council and was approved. The counter-protest, for lack of a better term, was approved expeditiously, because under the city code, anything that is freedom of religion, assembly, gets expedited with a three-day review. So, one, everyone had insurance. When we have to do an expedited review, everyone has to provide insurance, or the permit's not completed, or the permit's denied. Two, we made both parties split the cost of the police depart, of the police force. We told them both from the very beginning, you're splitting the cost whether you like it or not. So that bill went out yesterday. Concerning getting it done quickly, the first, the, the counter-protest of the Festival of Life, put in the application for one day, they paid. The police department and I were in regular contact for the, for, for future days, the days two through five. It was not the same size, other people were using the park, Bradley, Atlantic Park, no harm, no foul on that, and they were billed. So everyone did pay, everyone did have insurance, and everyone's been billed for what they, they were supposed to do.
Well, how, well, they were there five days, did they get billed?
Festival of Life, yes, Festival-
No, 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 the other one, the one that was protesting.
Everyone that I've spoken to, it wasn't a large event, it was five to 10.
Oh, that makes a difference, I mean, they still used the park, and they still, they still came and said that, you know, they were protesting, I mean, that's pretty good. I mean, I, you know, I mean, they still used the park.
Correct.
I don't know, was it a protest or was it an event? That's what I don't understand.
The standard we use is, is we can't sit there and say to everyone, everything is an event. For example, if you're at the library and you walk across the street and there's 10 people reading a book, does that qualify? Other people can still use the, the facilities. They're not renting it out, it's not 100 people, and this is just in general, whether Springwood Avenue Park, Bradley Park, Atlantic Library, it doesn't matter. The police department and I were constant communication that it wasn't the same as the first day. And I spoke to a couple people who, just like you were saying, it was an event, and I say, "Give me proof." If you sit there and I can find pictures of that there was 100 people, 50 people, that they, that anyone takes over an event, we'll bill them, they don't care. But, everyone says, "Oh, we don't have anything." So if someone can get documentation, it didn't meet that standard. It was, five to 10 people sitting in a park, it's not taking over the park, it, it doesn't meet the threshold of the special event.
I think what we're, I'm having a problem with is, city manager, is that I, what qualifies an event or protest, I mean, number of people, I mean, I, I, I just don't get it. There was a stage, there was music, I mean, what was that, just billed for that one night?
For a Festival of Life? They were billed for all five nights.
No, 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 protest, that's why I'm saying, was it a protest or was it an event? There's no music.
The stage was only up one night, Louise, the stage and music was one night, the Sunday night, the night that the, the counter-protest took out a permit.
Okay, and no one showed up after that?
No, no, you get up to the microphone.
Just whistle out the comment button.
Yes.
It's Ernest.
That's, that's all, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to figure this out. I mean, all I know is, I, I didn't know if it was an event, I, or protest, I just felt that there was enough people there for the whole five days, or whatever, 'cause anytime I went by there, there's a lot of hollering, and then you're telling me that they split the cost, that Festival of Life and the protester split the cost for the police department?
Yes.
Oh, that must've went over big.
I didn't care.
Okay.
It's about public safety, it's about making sure that both sides are protected along with the public.
No, 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 I, I mean, as far as I'm splitting it, of course we need protection, but the other thing is, who's paying for the protest? That's what I wanna know, and is it all paid up? And I'd like to know who ordered the protest, whose name is it under?
You can Oprah the, the applications.
Okay, all right, okay, so, it was a person, and as far as the animal house goes, I don't know if it's an animal house, but-
We'll look into the area, and if you can get the address, just email me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hi, Rita Moreno, 8th Avenue. I wanna continue where Louise left off. First of all, there was a schedule of events every day, from the 24th to the 29th. I don't know if you knew about that, but it, it was there. So did they pay for the five days, or the six days, $1,500 a day? Or, did they just pay for one day? This is, you know, this is becoming a nuisance now. First we had the incident by Frank Stelly, and the city workers went up, put the thing up, they put it down, they put it up, they put it down, six times, and I don't think we got paid for that. This has gotta stop, can't have this. It's not in the audit, I, I was listening to, and I wanted to see if there was a line for people that didn't pay, or for freebies that people get. There's no line for that. This is a business, this is taxpayers' money. And I don't think, and my personal opinion is, that this council shouldn't have been there. You take a vow to, you take an oath to represent all the people, not just a certain few, and you should remember that. Because, you know what? Other people are laughing at us, I don't know if you know that. But you know, people from all around, nobody has protests. This is a very nice town, and the people, we love all the people in the town, but you're, you're starting to separate everybody, and it's not right, and you shouldn't participate in that. The guy was giving out food, he was giving out a car, he was giving out a lot of things, we didn't hear any, we went twice. I heard about sin, but I, that's all I heard, he didn't hate anybody, in fact, he loves this council. That's what he said. I don't know about the city manager, but he did say the council. But, I mean, like, this has gotta stop. You can't favor one side to another, you're, you're making the split, we're not. We have to sit and watch this. They had a guy, a cop, all the way up like that, like the guy was a convent. He just came out of Camden, where they didn't even have an incident there. I mean, like, he's a preacher. You can listen or not listen, you don't have to go, but I didn't hear one word of hate out of his mouth. I don't think it's right that you treat people like that, that was terrible. It really was. And everybody was talking about it, that the council got involved in something like that. I think you better look over your job description, and it's not that. You're supposed to be watching the city and making sure that the city manager does his job. And, you know, of course, the city manager's never seen, so I don't know, doesn't attend anything, but, you have to be careful about things like that, it's not right that you do that. And you know you're a good council, but that was wrong, very, very wrong.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Motion to close.
Second.
Next time, will you please get in line? Thank you. Next time, would you form a line, please, or get behind the people that's speaking? Okay, bye.
Ernest McNally, 400 Del Lake Drive, apartment 5D, Asbury Park, New Jersey, 07712. I just wanna read my list, you know, just listening to the people about the protests is beyond, there's no comment I can make. First of all, to call that license permit person, city manager, to refer to them as a protest, and you as a counter-protest, is so ridiculous, it is beyond belief. I was there every single night, never saw the city manager, and I saw people from your protest there all the time. And, most of the time, when you were able to, you blasted music in a loud, violent, disturbing way, making comments that this person was a skinhead, a Nazi, and you were talking about hate, and all kinds of stuff. And, I'll tell you, we were all mortified, and you really disgraced yourself, so, I don't think you have any comeback. So, let me get to my list. The city council continues to block my emails, I can't communicate regardless of what I try and communicate. For example, last year, I was communicating about an illegal business and garage, I'm blocked. It turns out that it was an illegal garage, the person brought in their neighbor, the building exploded, and the person died. You know, it's always humorous to watch this thing, so everything is funny. So, it's gonna turn into a lawsuit, because the city manager, the city manager and the city council believe that they have the right, and that they say, because my emails arrive after 5 o'clock at night, the city of Asbury email address, that they're somehow criminal. It is so far-fetched and so ridiculous, that that's why the city council's associate in Long Branch, after many years, has been removed, because you can't prevent public participation. There's nothing illegal about sending an email 24/7. If you decide to open it up in your dining room, or wherever you are, which you're not supposed to do, you can't claim, "Oh, he sent me an email at home while I was barbecuing." It doesn't work. So he's gonna stick with his position, the city manager's gonna stick with his, and it's gonna be a lawsuit, which obviously you guys don't care about. I mean, you're like, "Oh, we have insurance," that's your answer to every- City mayor and council at that, at that protest, I think it should be fully investigated, I, I think you were horrible, and I think you've ordered on some criminal activity. I met a homeowner who said she was called, something about a Jew, like she was an Orthodox Jew, and a belligerent person about parking.
You can finish your statement.
She was referred to in that manner when she was talking about parking problems at Wesley Grove, and when she approached the Asbury Park Parking and Police, they referred to her, "Oh, here comes the Orthodox Jew, the belligerent woman." Now, I was at a meeting last night, and I had everything I could do to keep the parking commission and Officer Dello away from the swamp. I mean, I really felt like they were gonna go after her, swinging her arms at her and stuff, so, that's it, that's what we're dealing with.
Thank you.
Okay. Let me just correct something. Yeah, yeah, no, you can't reply. You kept on saying you referring, the council was there all five nights. I was there Sunday night, I don't know, who else was there? At your, at your beginning of your speech, you kept on saying, "You were there, you were there," you're not gonna be reply, I'm not gonna let you reply.
So you're gonna, you're gonna say-
I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to your false statements, and as far as your false statements about last night at the parking-
False statements?
Thank you. What, what you just said happened at the parking company meeting last night did not happen.
What were you to say that's false?
Because I was there.
So was I, I was there every night.
And she, this lady was attacked by the parking company?
At the meeting last night?
Yes.
I didn't have to tell you guys to stop, leave her alone, and she didn't turn to me and say, "Thank you, sir?" You were going after her, all of you.
I didn't say it worked.
I, okay, you didn't, I said, the members of-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yep, thank you, next.
Carrie Butch, 500 Del Lake Drive, I just wanna say thank you to the mayor and council for supporting us at the "Hate Has No Home in Asbury Park" rally. I wasn't prepared to talk, but I was there, I was extremely proud of the young people that organized the very quick counter-protest, and I felt like they did a great job, it was very diverse, we had pastors from Asbury Park. I just had a conversation with somebody the other day, talking about how far we've come as a community, because I'd never had that when I was organizing here 20 years ago, we didn't have pastors coming out the way that we do now, in support of LGBT community. So, I wanna say thank you, I, I wanna congratulate the organizers, I wanna congratulate the pastors that had the grace and the courage to come out. It's not about dividing, it's, it's, it's not about, it's, it's about not letting another philosophy, a dehumanizing philosophy, divide our community when we've worked as hard as we've worked. So, I appreciate you, thank you.
Thank you.
Jill Bartlett, 611 Banks Avenue. My first question is, all the spots that are blocked off because of the crane that's being taken down, are they paying for those?
Yes.
Second question, well, it's not a question anymore, that was my only question, but I wanted to say thank you guys for showing up to the-
So what happened, I was there, and I walked around all, all of it, and I took in all of it, and from the Atlantic Park side, you couldn't hear the Bradley Park side, and from the Bradley Park side, you couldn't hear the Atlantic Park side, and it was just like two, it was a dance party, and some guy who swindles low-income people, and like, it's a whole, the situation, I think, is just, I, I really don't know, I feel bad mostly for Pastor Akins, because I'm sure that he was friends with a person who told this person to come in here, and it was a person who is just, is out there for money, and is a false prophet, and that's the saddest part about it. So, thank you for showing up on that first day, that was the only day that there was a stage, I think that was the only day they should've billed somebody for anything after that, it was like freedom of speech, and it was people down there who just can't, and couldn't take this garbage persons viewing all this stuff to people inside of their home. It was loud, it was loud, like you could hear it on Del Lake Drive, you cannot hear concerts there, you could not hear like, only festivals where there are multiple stages can you hear that far in Asbury Park, that was far in line, and that's why I'm there.
Thank you.
Alicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue. I came here for, to talk about parking, I mean, potholes, well, sinkholes, to be honest. They're literally, well, one in front of my house is literally about this much space from the hole to the bottom, and the city, when I called the police at first, it took them a long time to come out, and then they put a cone, but it's been growing, and it's been filled with trash, with a cone, a couple cones stuck inside over top. And I'm being, I'm becoming very worried, because as I travel through the city, especially outside, if you look at the pothole, well, the hole outside, it is literally a hole, and there's about this much space from inside, so I'm getting fearful of the integrity of the roads in the city. Then, that was the first. And second is, I went- for money, and is a false prophet, and that's the saddest part about it. So, thank you for showing up on that first day, that was the only day that there was a stage, I think that was the only day they should have billed somebody for anything after that. It was like freedom of speech, and it was people down there who just can't and couldn't take this garbage persons viewing all this stuff to people inside of their home. It was loud. It was loud, like you could hear it on Del Lake Drive. You cannot hear concerts there, you could not hear, like, only festivals where there are multiple stages can you hear that far in Asbury Park, that was far and wide. And that's all I can say.
Thank you.
Felicia Simmons, Sewell Avenue. I came here for, to talk about parking, I mean, potholes, well, sinkholes, to be honest. They're literally, well, one in front of my house is literally about this much space from the hole to the bottom. And the city, when I called the police at first, it took them a long time to come out, and then they put a cone, but it's been growing, and it's been filled with trash, with a cone, a couple cones stuck inside over top. And I'm being, I'm becoming very worried because as I travel through the city, especially outside, if you look at the pothole, well, the hole outside, it is literally a hole, and there's about this much space from inside, so I'm getting fearful of the integrity of the roads in the city. Then, that was the first. And second is, I went to the Festival of Life. I believe that you, I don't like to be told to hate anyone, I want to know a person, and I think that we should approach it as a city differently. I think that we don't, we shouldn't do tit-for-tat, we should do love for love. And if it was me organizing a counter-protest, I would have showed up with my shirts and sat front row to make sure he stuck to doctrine and passed out water and hugs, or grabbed a bunch of people, the 800 people, and went over to Asbury Park Day and had a big party. Because, not taking one side over the other, but I am Christian, I love everybody because that's what Jesus told me to do. And that's how I live my life. We have to stop going big just for a big sake. We have to look at individuals because what I've seen at that event afterwards from both sides, not, mostly from other sides, that people were painful and had their scars whipped wide open, had their pain displayed and used, just to be used. I'm a person who believe if you have an issue, if you have a problem, you don't pour it out without having a solution. And I think a lot of was ripped open without pouring out a solution. Love is always the solution, community is always the solution. We should be careful of the people who we live with 365 days a year, not someone who's only going to be here for, God bless you, for five days. We should pair, make sure that we are careful in, in speeding to the pain of our neighbor because that's who was at the festival. They don't know, people don't know Shuttlesworth. They, but they do know their neighbor who they happen to see across the park and believe that they hate them. We should do something extraordinary to bring it to the table so we don't have pain, they don't leave pain behind, or hate behind, or divides behind. We should give them a cure if we whip something open.
And Felicia, what's the exact address of the one in front of your house?
1034 Sewell Avenue. When I tell you it's filled with garbage, literally filled with garbage.
That's the one that blew up today.
It blew up, I haven't been home all day, so I'm not even, that's new to me.
When we were fixing it, the sewer line erupted on one of our employees.
So?
So we're fixing it, but then it rained sewage today.
I haven't been home since this morning, since 9 o'clock, so I have no idea.
We're aware of it, we're fixing it.
So I'm coming home to poop. That's what I'm coming home to.
Motion to close.
Motion to close, please.
Move it.
Second. All in favor?
All close.
All right, we'll move on to minutes, we have three sets of minutes this evening, executive session minutes of June 27, workshop minutes of June 27, and regular session minute of June 27. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We have individual resolutions tonight, the first one's Resolution 2018-259, Resolution Approving Payment Bills. Councilmember Chapman abstains from purchase order 17-02489, 18-00372, and 18-00374. Can I have a motion to approve the bills, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Resolution 2018-260, Resolution Accepting to 2017 Municipal Audit, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-261, Resolution Authorizing Change Order Number Two for the Firehouse Lintel Project, can I have a motion, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-262, Awarding Contract for Improvements to Bridge and Heck Streets, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it. Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-263, Resolution Closeout Monmouth County Municipal Open Space Grants for Development Applications, Number 10-10, 12-10, 13-14 of Springwood Avenue Park Construction, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-264, Authorizing Granting a Five-Year Tax Exemption for Commercial Property to be Designated of the City of Asbury Park as Tax Map Block 302, Lot 7.01, 1105 to 1109 Memorial, Memorial Drive pursuant to NJSA 48, colon, 21, dash, 1, to exec. Can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-265, Amending FY '15 and FY 2017 Annual Action Plans, can I have a motion to approve, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-266, Authorizing Receipt of Additional Funds for the 2016-2019 Multipurpose Senior Grant, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-267, Resolution Approving the Monmouth Lodge 122 IBPOE of W Pride of Asbury Temple 64, 2017-2018 Liquor License Renewal, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2018-268, Resolution Approving to 2018-19 Liquor License Renewal for Monmouth Lodge Number 22 IBPOE, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Onto ordinances. Ordinance 2018-30, Amending and Supplementing Subsection 30-61.9 entitled Permit Exceptions of Section 30-61 Signs of Article 5 Development Standards of Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, New Jersey. Can I have a motion to introduce this ordinance, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Public hearing will be scheduled for August 8, 2018. Ordinance 2018-31, Approving Adopting Amendment to the Main Street Redevelopment Plan, can I have a motion to introduce, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
No.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
The ordinance is introduced, and public hearing will be scheduled on August 8, 2018. I need a motion to table ordinance 2018-21.
Move to the table, 2018-21.
Have a second, please?
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance for Public Hearing, 2018-29, Authorizing the City of Asbury Park to Convey an Easement Over Certain Portions of the Public Right-of-Way Area Adjacent to the Property Located at 541 Lake Avenue, to be Known as Block 3105, Lot 4.02, can I have a motion to open this ordinance up to the public, please?
Move it.
Second.
Motion to close.
Move it.
Have a second?
Second.
And can I have a motion to adopt res, or ordinance 2018-29, please?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Councilmember Kendall?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn, please?
Move it.
Second. All in favor?